Thank you, Mr. Blaine. We have our agenda in front of us and I'd need a motion on the floor to approve and adopt the agenda. We have a motion on the floor.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
A motion by Dr. Meyer, seconded by Ms. Gramp. All in favor signify if I say an aye.
Aye.
Any opposes? Hearing none. The agenda approved seven to zero. Opening comments, Dr. Baker.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Very briefly, I know that for school board, your brains are probably still full from Friday and we're following right back up here on Monday. But the goal for today is to bring just a few additional bits of information that are related to the proposal that came to you on the 19th. And this will focus a little bit on the employee compensation trends and some of the costs that we had talked about in that three-part story that I summarized. But this session is primarily an opportunity for you to continue to follow up with questions and to share individual and collective guidance to myself and the staff in terms of moving forward beyond today. I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Braswell.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Baker. Going to 2.01 budget discussions, Ms. Gaines.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Braswell and school board members. I do have a very brief PowerPoint. We looked at the agenda for this evening, opening comments, trend data, school board budget discussion, next steps, and closing comments. Now, by way of trend data, I just wanted to share with you what the trends have been. When you look at salary adjustments, you can see for 2015, the school board was able to give a step and a 1% COLA. The current year that we're in, 2016, a 3% COLA. And what's being recommended is a step and a 1%. Keep in mind, when you look at that step, that's about 3.2 million. When you look at the 1% COLA, that's about 1.7 million. That question was asked by Mr. Blaine at the last meeting. Also in here is including unfreezing steps, and that's about 200,000. So that total request there is $5.2 million. Next, if you look at VRS, as indicated before, what you have begun to see is that our revenues are not keeping pace with our mandatory increases. So if you look at VRS, you can see where the trend has been from 2009. From 2009, 2010, 2011, and 2012, that entire rate was paid by the employer. In 2013, the school board did make a decision that we wouldn't have the employees pick up their entire 5% in one year. That basically started in 2013. And you can see every year is almost going up. If you look at 2017, I wanted you to see the note. We're looking at an increase of 15.77. With that being the case, that would be a 4% increase. And we did take a look at FY '18. FY '18 is gonna actually go above 16%. So every year, there's a constant increase. Now, why is that important? We don't want to look at the budget in a one-year swoop. You really want to be multifaceted, multiple years. Health insurance increase, I wanted you to see the trend data here. When you start to look at 2014, that's when the employee did have an increase of 9.3. 2015, they had an increase of 1%. And then for 2016, there was no increase for either the employee or the employer. But for 2017, based on what's in the budget, we could see a health rate increase of 11.8%, and for the employee, 5%.
Ms. Gaines?
Yes.
I didn't mean to interrupt you. Is there a 2017 bar graph on there? Because I don't see it. I see 2016, but I don't see 17.
Yes. When you look at your PowerPoint slide that's in front of you, you will see a notation at the bottom. And right before we started, we were able to see that the screen here is not picking up the entire slide. So there's a note at the bottom. If you look at page seven, it says projected employer health rate increase 11.8, and the employee rate increase of 5%.
Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. And again, that's important because when you look at our health insurance cost on an annual basis, that's in excess of $30 million. So all of our comp and benefits is 85%. The step is 3.2. Yes, sir.
The employee rate increases 5%. What does that equate to dollars and cents?
Well, we did a quick calculation. If you look at, I want to say it was the employee on single, it was about $6 a month. And I can get that to you as well. Because we did cost it out for each one of the programs as well as each one of the tiers.
Because I'd like to know, like, family and like the Cadillac plan versus the non-Cadillac, just across the board. Thank you.
Sure. And what we can do, we can print that out in between this particular budget work session and the school board meeting. So you'll have that.
Dr. Meyer, you do have a question?
So that would mean with the 5% for the employee, the employee hasn't seen 5% since 2014.
That is correct.
Wasn't the 2014 covered by the employer?
In 2014, was it? No. It was covered by the employee. I did put a note here for 2013. That's when we picked up 15.3% of the employee. And that's the note that you see right at the top. So in 2014, the employee picked up their share, and the employer picked up their share.
Is it possible, then, with going up by 5%, that that would exceed the 2.5% to 3% increase in pay?
Now, what we did, we took a teacher at step zero to look at their salary. In order for their employee rate increase to exceed their salary increase, it would almost have to be somewhere at about 20%. But if you look at a bus aide or a bus driver, contingent upon what their health insurance plan is, you could see it increase. And I think, too, that's why we're providing three plans.
Thank you.
So when you look at, I want to say Key Care 200, employee only, that is $20 per month. So the employee does have an option if they want to move to another plan and only pay the fee when they access the services.
Correct. Thank you.
Mr. Twig, did you have a question? Okay. Please continue, I'm sorry.
So now, that just basically brings you to the budget highlights. So we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. Again, just to recap, when you look at the entire budget, it's basically broken down into three sections. Our mandatory costs for certain are exceeding the revenues that are coming in. Of everything that you see here, all the increases are on the employer with the exception of that 5%. We did see a slight reduction in the VRS non-professional. And that saved us about $100,000. So we were pleased to see that. The next one is budget highlights. Here, again, you'll basically see the step and the 1%. I wanted to point out, again, the adjustment of the frozen pay scales, 1%. That was highly recommended by the Employee Compensation Focus Group. Again, fully restoring the stipends back to where they were back in 2009, reducing the athletic fee from $75 to $50. We talked about the cafe monitors at the last meeting, and then, of course, non-compensation increases.
Ms. Shelley.
The, going back to our stipends, going back to the, did we ever reduce the stipends for advanced hours or degrees? So instance, a, somebody with a master's degree gets an additional 7%.
Supplements do not.
Those are supplements, not stipend. Okay, perfect.
Those were never adjusted.
I appreciate it. Okay, thank you so much.
Ms. Gaines, oh, go ahead, Mr. Blaine.
On page five, under the major budget highlights, first statement on the right, step and 1% pay increase. That's the COLA?
Yes, sir.
Call it a pay increase?
Yes.
Not salary?
Well, it's still a part of the salary because what we'll do, we'll take the individual salary, if it's $50,000, and we'll multiply it by 1%. So it's the same thing as a COLA. Yeah.
Could be misread, I thought.
Sure.
Any other questions? Mr. Twig.
And the COLA?
Yes, sir.
Scenario, that dates back, if we look at the slide going back to '09. Cost of living, 2%, 2.5%, 1%. Does that equate to less than or greater than the society, the region, cost of living?
When we looked at the cost of living, we kind of looked at inflation. And when we looked at inflation, that's been increasing by about 2%.
Per year since '09?
Since '09, yeah.
Five, seven, eight years?
So that's the justification for, at a minimum, it should be 1%.
And you made reference, another subject, please, to a committee recommending 1%?
In terms of the Employee Compensation Group, is that what you're referencing?
I assume so. The group you were referencing is all I care. I don't know the details.
We had a committee of about 25 individuals.
Okay.
And the purpose of that group was basically to study our pay scales and look at comparisons. And when we did that, we basically saw that we had, in essence, you know, over 100 pay scales, and probably 80 to 90% of them are frozen. So that means if an employee goes from, let's say, step 20 to 21, there's no increase in pay. And one of the things they wanted to recommend is that we eliminate the frozen steps. So let's say if you got to a point, and all the school board could do would be a step, that means everyone would receive something except for those at the top of the pay scale. And that's about 200,000. And that's something we've really been wanting to do probably for the last 10 years.
So can I imply from that that we're gradually and uniquely doing away with the step increase? As the old-fashioned way?
Not just yet. But this committee is basically a three- to five-year committee. And in phase three, or phase two, we will be looking at the options of going with a banned pay scale. We're studying other school districts.
Which starts when?
When does it start? We start the study next year.
2017?
2018, for the 2018 budget cycle.
For the 2018 budget?
Right now, we're working on 17.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gaines, I have a couple of questions. If there's anyone else have any questions before I proceed? One of the questions I had is, our pay scale in relationship to other counties, do we have some general numbers just in terms of, let's say, someone that's starting, how competitive we are versus someone that's mid-career versus our senior teachers? You know, how do we fare? How do we pan out compared to our competition, if you will?
Sure. I see the superintendent raising his hand.
I'm gonna give a general response. And one of the things that Ms. Colbert and Ms. Calverick have done is they have put together some salary compensation comparison slides. We could begin to go through those. It would be, take quite a bit of time because she has broken them down several different ways. But we're gonna provide those to you.
Okay.
Because I think it's important that you see, and I'm gonna give you a very general response. The general trend, and it's why, if you recall the slide in my budget proposal, school board that had some things that did not make the final cut in terms of the proposal. One of those that came from a recommendation from the Compensation Task Force or Focus Group was to address steps zero to 15 of the teacher step scale because there was very little mobility and economic competitiveness in that part of the teacher scale when compared with other school divisions. And so what you tend to see is a trend, even with surrounding school divisions, is from step zero up through 10 and then 15, you see us kind of in there. We're in the game. But we don't begin to become more competitive and separate ourselves until we get to 16. And then the average percentage between steps is 2.5%, if I'm not mistaken, Ms. Gaines.
16 and above.
But from zero to 15, it can be as low as .4 and as high as 1.2. So what you're seeing is that after about six or seven years of teaching, there's been very little movement on the step scale. And that is something that we hope to address, either through one of those recommendations, which is to address them on the current step scale, but then the study on the bands would also be, is there another way we need to view this over time, especially given the volatility in funding?
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Go ahead. Go ahead. I'll come back.
About 100 and... Oh, the hourly rate? Not, about 187,000. Eighty-seven.
Sorry, how about the lower athletic fees?
That was about 88,000.
Eighteen?
Eight-eight.
Eight-eight thousand?
Yes, sir.
That's a good improvement.
And what I'll do, I'll provide you with that list, Mrs. Gramp. I have quite a few of them memorized, but I think that's about 125,000. So, yeah.
And any other questions before? Okay, Ms. Blayla.
Some of my colleagues sort of touched on it, but could we get those graphs that we used to get of the other counties and where we are? And then, just elaborate a little bit more, it's interesting to me, talking about what Mr. Twig was asking the committee, is that, for lack of a better term, because we clearly had gotten to where things just weren't completely fair anymore. There were people not getting steps that should. I think it's okay to say that out loud. Are we trying to adjust a scale that just was not working for us anymore?
I really believe we're trying to address pay scales that really have become outdated when you look at the 21st century. So if you look at teacher pay scale, I want to say back in 2007, when I first came aboard, we did like a three-year teacher pay scale initiative. I want to say we put in that particular initiative almost $30 million.
I remember.
Did you go?
We started the same time.
That's right. Did you go? So a lot of focus was put into the teachers. We were looking to get that career ladder.
That's right.
For the most part, between, I want to say, step 10 to 35, roughly, it was an increase of 2.5. When we finished that component, we were trying to go to pay educators, health and safety officers, nurses, et cetera. That's when the economy failed. So when you look at the committee that we had before, we're really trying to make sure that we're competitive because they also recommended that for step zero, we start something at a rate higher. But we know that takes funds. We also talked about, let's look at how we compare, not only to school districts, but to the market. And that's why this particular committee has to be like a three-to-five-year committee. At the same time, we had some work that was done before by our consultant.
But when you come in as an administrator, you can bring years from, let's say, we hire a principal from another county. Are they able to bring all of their years and then they start at a step based off of that?
Very good question, because we also looked at that. When individuals came in, there was a practice. The cap was step 15. Based on the fact that it appears that we did lose some very good candidates, this same group recommended that we increase the cap to step 20.
Okay, so we could pay them up to a step 20, depending on what they're bringing with them?
Correct, based on their degree, based on their years of experience. And then when you look at teachers, one of the things we try to do, we try to make sure when we back the pay scales up, you do not have a brand-new teacher coming in making more than a teacher who's had one year of experience.
Yeah, that's sort of what I'm trying to get to. I hear that, and that's got to stop.
We put measures in place to make sure that that does not happen. But at the same time, a lot of employees, and I can understand, they want to make sure every year they get a step, and it includes a monetary value.
Well, a step goes towards their VRS, where their COLA doesn't, correct?
Well, the step does not go toward, your pay goes towards your VRS.
So we are, we are looking at adjusting all of this now that, I'm just glad we're talking about that we have steps and COLAs again. There was so long, and none of this mattered, did it? But it's a good conversation. And I'm glad that committee is informed and taking its time because there was some clear issues, from what I understood. Maybe this would balance everything out.
Yes.
We're gonna have, Dr. Baker, do you want to add first? I'm gonna have Dr. Baker, and then Ms. Shelley, and then Dr. Meyer.
Just one other part in, in kind of going back. And I know that when Ms. Gaines was referring to a consultant or a pay study that had been undertaken by a previous staff and school board, I think I've shared during other budget work sessions before that those studies cost money also. And usually, when they do comparisons and they make recommendations, most of those recommendations cost a great deal of money. And so what we decided to do, and gets back to looking at this Compensation Focus Group, is to make salary and compensation an ongoing study, not to make recommendations and then it's completed. Because we know that there was a time when the step increase was an annual meritorious increase that went with the evaluation. And the question wasn't whether a step would occur, it was whether anything addition to the step would occur. Now that our new normal is, we have to see if there's even going to be enough revenue to do any type of pay increase, we feel like we need to continue to look at how we have our scales structured, but also how we need to prioritize certain things. But we need to do that as an organization, as opposed to having an outside group come in. And so that's why the Compensation Focus Group will continue to meet. And I think anything that the school board wants, myself, Ms. Gaines, and folks in Human Resources to take back to that group to look at, let that be a fluid process. And share with us other things that you would like the group to research and look into.
Who is on this committee? How are they decided?
We have a principal from each level. We have teachers. I know we have a nurse in terms of having a staff person. We also have a community leader. I want to say in total, it's about 20 individuals, as well as finance and HR. Basically, Mrs. Colbert took the lead, working with cabinet to come up with a list of names who would be a part of the committee. And if you have recommendations of additional individuals that may be interested, we'll definitely welcome more.
Ms. Shelley.
This wasn't my initial question, but are there any paras on the committee on that, that task force or committee? There are. Okay. I know a few years ago, we changed, we weren't calling them, and this was maybe before I got on the board, when I was still teaching, we stopped calling them steps, and they were started, they were called years of experience. Are we calling them steps now, or are we calling them years of experience? Because when everything was frozen for so long, you couldn't say that you were on, you had, you were on step eight, but you'd had 10 years of experience. So have we, are we back to steps, but they equate with years? How is that working now?
Very good question. We still say steps because our pay scales are based on steps. But there's a difference between those categories of employees who are teachers and those who are non-teachers. According to the Virginia Code, your pay scale, your step, must equal years of experience. So for teachers, if you look at the bottom of the pay scale, it said years of experience. But for those who are non-teachers, it does not. So good question.
Dr. Meyer.
I think the discussion that we're having on the salary scales is really pertinent to the idea that when we go before the Board of Supervisors to look at funding, I'm gonna bring back what we talked about several years in a row, and that's sustainability. Because if we, it's really hard to plan for something if you can't know that what it's gonna take to sustain it is there. And we keep having to, the problem that we got into with, excuse me, with the salary scales, was in those first 15 years, we were having to compress it. In other words, in order to create a difference between the year before and the new person coming in, we kept inserting mini-steps, you might say, in there. And that has really jammed it so that between 0 and 10, it's most probably 15 to 20 that have been jammed in there. Because one time, we were doing stipend, a salary plus a stipend, and we got out of that. And it leads us to, and I'm really glad that Dr. Baker really has a committee going, because it's gonna take a lot of minds to take a look at that, because it's very well gonna have to be something totally different and new. It's almost impossible to take and transition from a convoluted kind of schedule that we now have that really is rewarding at 2.5% with 15 and above, up to 35. But below that, you know, it's miniature, it's mini. And it is, I don't know how you get out of it short of coming up with something new, to break loose of it. Because if you just take something and you say you want to start with 42,000 instead of 40, that carries, it has a ripple effect up 35 times. And it's impossible to do that. So it's almost gonna have to be coming up with a whole new schedule. And it's gonna take a lot of good minds to put that together, whether they're clusters or whatever. But even to support that, we're gonna have to have some kind of effort from the supervisors that is sustainable, that we can sustain it. And if we go with a plan, we can't fund it. We got a plan there. It's the same problem we had back in 2007. Came up with a very nice book, like Ms. Blayla, like I said, then you wind up putting it on the shelf because you can't do anything with it. You can't implement it. It's beautiful, but you can't implement. It's not sustainable. So we really have to have, and I know we're heading on again, a financial agreement. We talked about trying to get that with the county so that there's some kind of an understanding. So we, as a board, know where we're going and what we're trying to do. So I hate to see us come up with a plan, and all of a sudden, we're gonna have to put it on the shelf because we can't do it. You know, it's nice, but we can't really do it. And you don't want to create a lot of bad morale when you think, you lead people to think you can be able to do something, and then you can't fund it. And that's gonna get, you know, really people upset. It's while we really have, wanting to do something, but we can't fulfill that dream. We can't execute it. So, you know, I think the two are tied together, you know, one with the compensation study, but two, the sustainability on trying to be able to fund these things. And as we have increases in VRS and health, it really takes away from our ability, then, to be able to do something on the comp side. Because it's working against us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Blaine, and then Mr. Twig.
My concern, if there is one, would be, and there is one, the teacher is the most important person in this whole structure around here. They're, they're the ones delivering education. I'm just wondering, you mentioned the lack of competitiveness at the lower levels, at the initial portions. Has that been a problem for us in actually recruiting? Is that, have we failed to attract potential teachers because of our salary? People that are looking ahead five or six years would, would find us less desirable from a salary standpoint than other places, from what I understand?
What I'm giving is a, more of a superficial information. And based on observations and feedback, I don't have anything in front of me data-wise. My observation and perception is that the initial recruitment, no, it has not been a big issue. When people begin to have other needs economically and they begin to look at other locations, they may find that as, especially in these early years, zero to 10, that they see a decided economic advantage to moving to a different district to teach. I don't think it's related to the quality of their experience here, but I do think there are just some situations that economically I have to make, I feel like I need to make more money. But I, so I think it's more of the losing of staff, though I don't think we lose them in high volume or in droves or anything like that. But I do think there's a greater chance that we would lose them due to the current step scale than to not be able to recruit them.
And when that happens, we've lost all the experience that they've gained, and now they're taking it somewhere else.
One, one other thing that I think we have a difficult time doing is when we get to a place where we cannot successfully recruit teachers who have a considerable amount of experience from other school divisions that are at a certain place in their step scale. Now, that can happen here to other places as well, but we aren't able to provide the same amount to them in coming here as they would receive where they are for the amount of experience that they offer.
Mr. Twig.
And I would add to Mr. Braswell, or Mr. Blaine's list of teachers being our And I would add to Mr. Braswell, or Mr. Blaine's list of teachers being our most valued asset, yes, but we have to include our admin people, our bus drivers and our custodians as well. I think everybody, every employee in this system, including everybody sitting here, is, in my opinion, equally valuable. And, but God bless the teachers for their, their, everything that they do. But, and yes, Dr. Meyer, I concur. I think we do need to come to some terms with the, the people that do dish out the local funds at some point. However, I don't think now is the time to hold them accountable for something that I think we haven't even resolved ourselves. Point being, I apologize for the political statement, but campaigning this past year, I've had three teachers in my district say, bring those step increases back. So I come to the body and I say, or ask, what's the status of this commission in getting rid of those raises or, or, or the methodology? And two, how and when are we going to communicate that message, A, primarily and firstly, to the teachers, the people that are involved, the step increase, and secondly, to the citizens of this community? That's a live question, if anybody would like to answer it.
Mr. Twig, I'm not sure that I understood exactly the part about, I think what we were discussing is the idea of trying to better rectify the step scales in terms of the, the equity. But last year, in terms of explaining it to folks, that was the very reason that we went forward last year with a 3% COLA, because we knew that we would not have the funding anytime soon to rectify that. We continue to have that issue. So until we either, we can redo the scale, and we can't do that unless, to make it equally unless, and I'll give you an example.
Take time, right?
We can have, we can have what I would call, especially in times where we don't know what the next year is going to bring, we can have winners and losers in terms of the salary compensation package in a given year. So if we wanted to front-load our, our early teacher scales, we could do that, but we would probably have to do it at the expense of folks at the other portion of the scale by giving them considerably less. And I think when I came on board as superintendent, there had been a number of years consecutively where there was no opportunity to receive a pay increase. And so that was why we wanted for at least three straight years to sustain that. And so this, this would be the third straight year. But until we can begin to get to the place where we can plan for additional revenue, we can simply, I don't believe, can rectify those scales without cutting another portion of the scale or the rest of our employees short in terms of the compensation plan.
Thank you. That's a thorough explanation. That is news to me, just coming out of the citizen arena. But then, the second piece of that, what about communication? I mean, have our teachers, should our teachers be understanding this concept, this methodology, this process? Has everybody been informed through Bushers and meetings? And how far back does that go?
Right. Well, and I'll just speak to what we do on an annual basis. I visit every faculty every year and try to answer any questions related not only to budget, but will often present our current fiscal position or, depending on what time I meet with each faculty, I, I may be sharing a slightly different information. But we also work with our principals. They are kept up to date and they are very involved and collaborative in terms of the, the development of the budget. And now, this added piece of the compensation focus group also includes the current president of the Spotsylvania Education Association that represents all employees, or a number of different employees throughout the school division. And that person is another line of communication. So I would say we have communication arrows going all over the county in terms of letting them know how we are trying to not only sustain the current effort in terms of annual compensation, but how we want to, over time, enhance it or supplement it.
So pretty much then it is a dead issue. All of our employees should be, should have been informed.
I, I believe that each employee group, each employee group, I would imagine would, and, and for lack of a better phrase, all compensation is personal. So when it comes down to communication for whole groups, there still may be individuals that have a question based on their own individual situation. And our offices and doors are open to work with those folks individually if there's anything that they're unclear about.
Okay. It sounds like communication's probably the only remaining issue. Constant communication.
Absolutely. It's always ongoing.
Thank you.
Any other questions from other board members? I, I have, I have a couple of questions. One of the concerns that I had, last year, we discussed the importance of substitute teacher pay and making sure that we start a process of making our substitute teaching pay scale more competitive with surrounding areas. How has that been impacted in this budget in any way?
In looking at FY '17, there were no adjustments coming forward at this time. But what we did do in looking at the budget for FY '16, the current year, in most cases, the rates either went up by $5 or $10. When we went back out to compare our new rates for '16 compared to others, also the audit and finance committee had looked at it with principals, as well as principals looked at it, we saw that we're now more competitive. So in trying to take a limited amount of resources, we saw that at this time for '17, requests would not come forward to the school board.
Okay, so.
Because we're more comparable now.
Yeah, so we, our effort has put us in a place where we can sustain ourselves in that, in that arena. And the other question I had, did you want to jump in there, Dr. Baker?
Just that, that one did not, again, come forward, but it was something that was a part of the developmental stage of the, the budget proposal. And I do think that when we talk about being competitive, that again can be a matter of perception. You can be competitive, you can be in the game, or you can be ahead of the game. And so I think that we do see that we could improve our pool and improve the quality through increasing those rates over time. I also believe staff had costed out, and I don't know if we shared this last year, but they had costed out what a full-time daily substitute would cost for every school. And that was in the millions of dollars, 1.1 million dollars. And so we realized that was not within reach, but it will be something that we will come back to each year.
And, and I, I look at the substitute teacher pay from two perspectives. One, obviously being in a position where we're sustainable and competitive. But the reason why the competitive part is important to me is that it is an excellent ground for recruiting. Principal has an opportunity to see that teacher. They become a part of the fabric of the organization and they buy into our system. And so the acquisition cost of coming up with a new teacher, when you've had able substitutes that made themselves available to the system, has to be a lot easier and a lot cheaper for recruiting than our traditional methods. So I just bring that to everyone's attention. And then I'm going to turn to Mr. Wolf and ask the question about stipends in terms of weight room stipends. There were some discussions about looking at the current way we pay stipends out to coaches and that there was a gap in terms of the maintenance of the weight room and the weight training that occurs in the weight room. Have you had any further discussions with your task force in how to possibly include some form of a weight room stipend that would be fair for coaches that engage our children in weight training throughout the year?
Sure. The, the discussions have, have gone on with the athletic task force, but what you have is, number one, the qualified individuals to go ahead and supervise players and athletes when they're in the weight room to begin with. There's the supervision piece that's in and of, of itself, but you also, what's the qualified individual in there supervising those students and what they're lifting and how their technique and everything else happens to be? In consultation with the activity directors, that's a discussion that continues on who's going to go ahead and supervise that weight room and the qualifications of that individual. We have our athletic trainers that happen to be in-house at that point. Do they work in tandem with those individuals on technique and different aspects of the weight room? So, but I know that that's something that is, that continues to be a discussion in regards to that.
Yeah. And, and the reason I address it as well is, Dr. Baker and I had an opportunity to visit some of the weight rooms in the high schools in their county. And the weight rooms are at different levels of repair based off of the personalities that are in place to implement the weight training program. And the parity is, in my opinion, the parity between certain schools are not, there's wide variances in, in parity. And I think by having a weight czar, if you will, that they could have, you can bring the weight rooms up to a standard where there's some more parity amongst all the schools in the division. So I just bring that to your attention. I know you're, you've been studying it, and I wanted to find out if there was any resolution or any breakthrough in terms of weight, weight rooms stipends. Did you have a question?
I, I just have a comment, and I, and I applaud what you're saying about the weight room stipends. But, and, and I, and it would be an awesome idea, but until we have teachers that are staying after school to remediate our students for, to, to give, for their, their enrichment that they're doing for the students, or for the extra intervention that they're staying after school to support the students, I don't see putting money into the, into weight rooms because right now, we're, we're academically focused and, and, you know, I'm a sports mama. But yet, right now, we're academically focused and we have a lot of programs going on after school. And I just think of Freedom Middle School, and they have this amazing STEM program going after school. And all of those teachers that are staying after are not paid. It is all voluntary. So until there's something for our, our teachers that are staying after school to support our students' academic needs, then I can't see bringing anything for, for weight room needs.
Well, again, there, from my viewpoint, there's no deviation between what they do academically and athletically. They're both tied. The academic experience is just as much a, a part of the academic experience and vice versa. The athletes that are being supervised or currently being supervised by coaches that are not receiving a stipend. I know for one, there is a, me personally, I used to volunteer as a, a coach in a weight room. Not that I wanted pay. I, I did it because I did, for other reasons. But I saw coaches that gave of their time when they weren't being compensated while participating in the weight room. So I, I don't, I'm, I'm one that does not put a barrier between what teachers do and what coaches do, because they do the same thing, which is educationally enrich our children. So that's, that's the reason why I bring it up. I don't argue with you at all that the teachers that are spending time with the children, doing things with the chess club or with, you know, you know, publications or, or, you know, yearbook club, things like that, their jobs are just as valuable as the person that's spending time with the kid in a weight room. So, so those, those were the questions I had. Do we have any other comments before we move on? No, go ahead.
Ms. Gaines, you turned your PowerPoint off, but going forward more slides. I mean, I'm going the major budget highlights. Are we going to that, or can I ask a question about that? They had just kind of frozen your presentation with questions, so I didn't know if we could move past that. I, for our 24 special education personnel that is on the list that we all know is highly needed because of our increase in special education enrollment and how strapped they are right now to provide the services that we are, you know, mandated to do without funding. Can you just talk about kind of the current load? That, this, we have one social worker now, right, that is taking care of everything? I mean, just kind of how that, that what we have on the list is going to help. I know that we don't have a currently an occupational therapist, so that's a need that we are fulfilling.
Right. We have, so when you're looking at those specialty area positions, we have a team of about 13 social workers. And then our school psychological team, we have 11. For occupational therapists, we have a team of about eight. Now, these are numbers I'm thinking of off the top of my head, so I might be wrong there. Thank you very much, Ms. Gaines. All right. So social workers, we have 14. For psychologists, we have 13. And then for our speech therapists, we have one per school, and then some have a .5 that is shared between multiple locations, giving them a total of 1.5 SLPs. So our needs are growing because our, our student population is growing and we need to create more special education programs. Students with low incidence disabilities that require a program, they require a higher level of related services.
Any other questions? Any other questions or concerns? We'll move on to 3.01. Or, excuse me, Ms. Gaines, did you finish? You finished? Okay.
Just here, just highlighting, as we move forward to the next step, with the school board scheduled to approve its budget on Monday night, this is pretty much where we stand. The overall revenue's 4.7. Once you take into account mandatory costs, which are out of our control, debt service, that gives you a preliminary gap of 2.9. And then when you add compensation that we talked about this evening, the new positions, and then that gives us a gap of 12.6. So that definitely does bring us to the next piece, which is the school board budget discussion. Any questions and any consensus as you give staff guidance as we prepare for next week?
Okay, thank you. And we'll move on to school board discussions on those. We'll have Ms. Blaylock go first.
Thank you, Mr. Braswell. Really, Ms. Gaines, this is for you. I'm going to ask the hard questions. I think we've all come to a place where we, we pretty much know what the budget looks like. I, I don't see any big, major changes coming. We, you know, don't get everything we want, but we do get a lot of things we want. So I, again, commend everyone for yet another great budget, just like last year's was. Have you got a backup plan if we aren't funded accordingly to the budget that we're looking at today? And do we have a few options of a backup plan? That's one question. The second question will be, have you been working with the county finance team? And is there any indication of if we're looking at anything other than what they call level funding? I'm going to say they call it that because I don't think that's the right term for it. It's just the same amount you gave us last year. But is there any indication we might get more? And what's the, talk about the what-ifs. What if they don't fund us? Because we've, they pretty much usually don't. So we're, we're hoping that this year they decide to increase the taxes and we may get some money. But if we don't, what's our game plan?
Of course, we do have a backup plan, of course. When you look at where we are, we are costing out various scenarios. So number one, when you look at the three main items in the budget, mandatory costs, that is something that you're required to pay. But there's some light there. With the general assembly being in session, there's a possibility that there could be a revision in the VRS rate. If that does happen, that will help. We've also asked Anthem to continue to look at our claims. Are we for certain come March that we will see a rate increase of 11.8, or could that be something less? So we are looking at those two angles. In terms of the county, we have had an initial meeting with them in terms of looking at FY '17 and really looking at almost like a five-year model. At this point in time, we were informed, assume level funding for Dr. Baker's presentation on January the 19th.
So they actually use the words, just assume level funding again?
For right now, yes.
Same old, same old.
But we do know, though, and we're going to be optimistic until the end.
You go for that.
All right. Mark Taylor is presenting his budget on February the 9th. Prior to that, we are in the process of working with him and his staff to see if we can have a meeting prior to that. But we're hopeful. There are some strategies that they could basically look at. Number one, looking at the local composite index. That did go up from .3555 to .3617. Over a two-year period, that means the school division will lose 1.8 million in state funding that we otherwise would have received. We're hopeful at a minimum that that piece will be replaced because we have support for that. Also, there may be some opportunity. Also, there may be some opportunities when you look at debt service. You remember a couple of years ago what they did, they used some of their fund balance to help pay for our capital projects. And then also looking at, is there an opportunity to look at some salary pieces there? So we're, we're in contact with them and we're in discussions.
Okay, but having said that, what would go if they didn't fund us appropriately?
Number one, the mandatory costs, of course, and then the only other two items that you have.
I'm not talking about mandatory.
I know, I know.
Is what it is.
I just wanted to say that, I just wanted to say that.
You just got to say it out loud.
Got to say it out loud because it's a priority. The next two things that you have, Ms. Blalock, would be, number one, your compensation piece that we looked at, which is the 5.2, and then the 4.9, which is your positions and your non-comp. You only have three areas, and this is a needs-based budget. It does not even cover all the needs.
Right, that's right.
So you would look at those three areas, and it would be the, the bottom two that we talk, we talk about.
Well, because I think it's good that we be honest and put it on the table that if the funding doesn't come through as planned, and we have more funding sources than just local, but if the funding doesn't come through as planned and as needed, that we will have to revisit this budget we're looking at, and we won't get the things that we're talking about that could include the compensation. So I think it's important, we're very realistic about that. And, and I just ask that Mr. Braswell and Ms. Grant take it to the supervisors next week and, and do us, do us proud and let them know this is a needs-based budget, and, and hopefully this year, they will value the school district, the children, and the 24,000 kids, and the biggest entity in the county. And you want to make a good county, make good schools, so.
Hold on, Mr. Twigg and then Dr. Mar.
Excuse me, how much do the 24 special ed teachers cost? We have a dollar amount associated with that?
Yes, we're going to pull that up for you in a moment.
Thank you. And about fuel savings, has that entered anywhere into this conversation in the past two months? And where is it on paper if, if we have?
Um, when you look.
If I may ask?
Sure. If, when you look at your highlight packet, one of the things we tried to do was to provide you with an object code report by department. And I did look at gasoline, and when you look at the budget for FY seventeen, you're looking at a budget amount of about 1.6 million. For the last year that we just left out, I want to say we spent about 1.3. Today, we actually saw gasoline prices begin to tick back up. So what I'm saying here is that when you look at the trend, the trend is not consistent enough to bring it down to much lower than the 1.6 that we had budgeted. Because one.
Dollar sixty? I'm sorry, 1.6 what?
1.6 million. It's the total budget for gasoline.
Okay, good.
And if you look at the trend, we just have a one-year trend. Prior to that, every year we spent anywhere from 1.6 million to almost 1.9 million.
And what are the months where you start your new cycle?
We normally start looking at July. I do meet with the Transportation Department every single month. Based on what we're seeing so far this year.
From July to January, here's what.
A savings of about $200,000. But keep in mind, we did not receive all of the student enrollment that we were expecting. So not only did we lose the students, we lost the revenues, absolutely.
So it's gone, it's expended.
It's expended, yes, sir.
And what's the per gallon rate on the expenditures averaged out? Do we, do we have that number?
We do have that number. We'll get that to you because I want to give you the average because it does change every day. So we're taking notes here, we'll get that to you, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Mar, I want to ask you to hold for a second. Ms. Grant wants to ask a follow-up based off of Mr. Twigg's question.
Oh, anyway, it is kind of just to elaborate on Mr. Twigg's question. On the special education teachers, a large portion of that is mandated. Just another example of a unfunded mandate. We have to have a certain amount per enrollment by law in a lot of cases, and we don't have the funding for that.
I thought that was the case, and, and so being, we want to prioritize that item then, I would think.
Exactly.
Agreed?
Dr. Mar?
One of the, the, I just wanted to highlight that in the budget book here, the fuel for Mr. Twigg was, and transportation was cut 103,000. Because that was reduced in their budget.
That is correct, and that brought us down to the 1.6. Also, in looking at the special ed, those 24 positions, it's about 1.3 million dollars, just so you can have that number.
There is another piece to this as we're looking at the revenues. And I was just asking Mrs. Blalock, because I received a reassessment, and my assessments went up. And so I'm, I'm thinking that others would have as well. I know that, that can vary. But if the assessments are going up, then that is revenue coming in to the county that, you know, I know the, the, the thought will be to reduce, but there is revenue. And the question is, can that revenue be passed on to address our needs? So, you know, and I'm going to ask, you know, Mr. Braswell and, and Ms. Grant to, in your, in your presentation, we should not, we should not ignore the fact that there is revenue coming in to the county due to the reassessment. And now whether the county will, you know, look favorably on that, I have no idea, but it is there. We should not ignore it, and education should receive the benefits of that. Because that's another facet to, to what we're looking at as what's available. I know that's being optimistic, granted, but, you know, we need to be optimistic because we have needs and there are ways to address it. We do not possess those means to address these needs. But we do have an obligation to present our needs, and we have likewise an obligation to request that our needs be duly considered and funded.
Are there any other comments from board members? Any other, Ms. Shelley?
As I've said before, I, I fully support this budget. And, I mean, I have my, my wish list, and there's, there's a whole lot more that I would support. But, but we are looking at funding. But I'm just going to put it out there for next year, is to continue to support our special education needs. We need more teachers in the classrooms for special education. Our staff deserve to continue to get their steps and those pay increases. All of our, all of our staff deserve, they're working way, every day, they're working harder and harder on what they have to do. And so those are just a couple of, of the things that I, I would love to have seen. I mean, the, the pay increase we have now, but I would love to have seen more, more support for our special education. The substitute pay, as Mr. Braswell brought up, I mean, we are more competitive, but we're not still, we're still not there with everybody. So more things like that. So, I mean, and, and of course, the activity buses, and there's a lot of other wish lists, things we could add to our wish list. But I think we need to continue to just keep looking at the future. And those, that might be wish lists, but they're also needs because our students deserve to be able to, and I'm not talking about just the, for athletics, for our, for the activities bus. It's called an activities bus because we've got students staying after school for remediation, staying after school for clubs. They're the one, you know, and of course the athletes, but it's not just for, for, for one group of people, it's for ever all the students. So there's, there's needs, and it's all students, student-based. Everything that, that, that we would request is got our students in mind. And I just want to continue to let our board of supervisors know that this is, as you've said, this is our needs-based budget with the needs of our students on the forefront of this budget. And as Dr. Baker put in his presentation, it's dedicated to our students because that, they are why we're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley. Any other comments? Mr. Blaine?
To some extent, I suppose I could repeat what I said the other night, but I feel very strongly about the needs-based budget. And this is minimum needs-based budget that we're asking. This is a matter of values. It's pure and simple. What's important to us? And I've had too many people of the 14, 16, 100 people that I talked to during this campaign that are in favor of spending money on education that is not now being spent. And I think that our, our budget meets academically many of the needs we have. We could add another lot of money more, a lot more money to this for needs too. But this is a minimum, and we need to have that provided. Otherwise, the kids end up paying for it, literally. If, if they don't have teachers when they need them, they may pay the rest of their life because they failed to get what we could have provided had we been properly staffed. And those are minimum requirements.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine. Anyone else who would like to make a comment? I'll reserve my comments till later on. Moving on with 4.01, next steps, Ms. Gaines?
In terms of next steps in your PowerPoint that's before you, there's just two key dates I've highlighted for you. On Monday, February the 8th, the school board is scheduled to approve both your operating budget as well as your CIP budget. Keep in mind, there's still some unknowns, so we'll bring to you, basically based on what we've discussed today, we'll bring that budget to you on Monday to approve with the gap of the 12.6. And then both the chair and the vice chair, you'll be presenting your PowerPoint February 16th. And in the meantime, we'll be taking close look at what's going on at the General Assembly. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Gaines. Dr. Baker?
Okay, thank you again to everyone, all of our staff. A lot of our staff is out here today. Thank you for being here. Before we go, I just want to thank the board for their questions and their overall support for this budget proposal. A couple of things, just as a closure, I know that Ms. Blalock had asked about Plan B. And, and just in terms of our development of the budget, we developed it with the idea that this is what we need and this is what we hope is, is funded. We do not have a designated cut list in a, in a priority order. And so I make sure that folks know that in advance because we want to see what the final figure is. And then we then look at, and we always can even be in a different place in a few months, even in terms of some of our special education needs that could increase between now and then that we put, I have to put even higher priority on. But we will certainly have to make reductions if we are not able to see the funding that we need. And those reductions could be not only of what is listed here, but in order to accommodate things that we have to accommodate, we may have to reduce existing resources or services in order to balance this budget. Finally, is, I know the three budgets prior to this, one of those budgets that we requested 1.6 million dollars in 2014, I believe, was fully funded by the county, and that was a good position to be in. And I think ideally, we'd like to be in that position every year, to have a figure that appears more manageable and more reasonable. But I also believe that the state continues to fall woefully short in its allotment of funding and its percentage of funding towards public education. And now on a daily basis, this will be the end of my commentary, but on a daily basis, I am seeing more and more mandates on public education from a variety of perspectives. And so we don't see the work of education becoming easier or less complicated or less mandated. We see more that we will have to continue to react to if a number of bills and, and legislation is passed through the General Assembly. So while we remain optimistic, the challenges are there. And so I thank each of you for your support and meeting us with these challenges as we navigate. Thanks.
Dr. Baker, thank you. Your staff, I, we really appreciate everything that you do. I mean, just the amount of preparation that went into giving us the opportunity to absorb a mountain of information. I knew it took a heroic effort, and we don't take what you've done lightly, so thank you very much. We're now at 6.01 adjourned. And Ms. Grant has moved to adjourn. Do we have a second? We have a second? All in favor, signal by a five, saying aye?
Aye.
I hear no nays. We're adjourned.